All right. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Scioto Township Planning Commission for October 25th, 2021. We are using the Zoom webinar platform for members of the public who've joined us by video or phone. Your microphones are muted, but will be opened when appropriate in order to minimize disruptions to the meeting and connectivity problems. Only members of the commission have video, applicants and staff have video access, but have been asked to turn off their cameras until called upon. At that time, they may use share screen capabilities if appropriate. All chat and question and answer boxes have been disabled. The meeting is being held via video conference in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. All members of the public body and members of the public participating electronically will be considered present at the meeting and may participate as physically present. All members of the commission are participating from Scioto Township when we do roll call. If you could indicate where you are joining from, and there'll be an opportunity for the public to speak during the public hearing and instructions for public comment and the public hearing will be given at that time. I just want to note that at our last meeting, the planning commission voted to go back to a virtual format. However, both the, there are three public hearings, the one for this evening and two for 11/8 were advertised as being both in person at the meeting hall and virtually. So Doug has graciously agreed to be in person so that we can accommodate anyone, any of the public showing up for the public hearing. We do not have Secretary Chang joining us yet, so I'll go ahead and do roll call. Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Commissioner Moore.
Present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Commissioner Sharma.
Present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Commissioner Chang is not present. Commissioner Carteau is not present. Commissioner Gilbertson, present Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. With that, we'll move on. Oh, okay. Yeah, Commissioner Holland, if you could use the mic in the meeting room, that will be... Yeah, thank you. All right. Then we're moving to adoption of the agenda. Are there any revisions or additions to the agenda as posted? I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as posted.
I'll move.
Commissioner Hyde, move back. Commissioner Hyde. I need support from Commissioner Moore. Any further comments? All right. Could I have Commissioner Holland read, do you have a roll call available for you, the agenda that you could record?
Sure. Commissioner Sharma. We're taking a roll call, right?
Roll call vote for adoption of the agenda, yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yeah.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Carteau.
He hasn't joined yet.
Commissioner Chang. Commissioner Holland, yes. Chairperson Gilbertson.
Yes.
Me, best.
Right. And moving on to, and then Commissioner Holland, would you be willing to act as secretary until, I did not hear that Commissioner was not going to be attending this evening. Would you be willing to act as secretary?
I don't know that I have the document to do that.
Okay. Who else has the meeting forms that act as secretary?
Only on my computer.
What meeting forms?
They're, okay, I will actually...
Are they in the agenda packet?
I will email those to you. Hang on just a second.
Sure, okay. Let me open my email.
That'd be great. Yep.
You just let me know what to do, that's all.
Yep, will do. Hang on, it'll just be a second.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no.
All right, and... All right. Commissioner Sharma, I just sent them an email form. It's primarily the meeting form document that you can, it's in Word form that you can just...
I have it, yeah.
Okay, great. And then you can kind of complete that as we go. Does that work for you?
Complete that as we go, like with the public comments?
Yeah, basically, it's making sure you document the motions and the votes. Yep, and we have sign-in sheets for the public comment. So if you use the meeting form...
I'm trying to look at it. Give me one more, Jan. So it says in the beginning, "Public comment" and "Name, address, phone number," right?
That is the sign-in sheet. If you go to the next attachment, it should be a meeting form that starts with "Meeting actions for Monday, October 25th, 2021."
Meeting actions, no. It says, "Name of person presenting comments and materials."
I think there are three attachments to the email that I forwarded.
Oh, okay.
So it's the second attachment, yep.
There's a PDF, Suzanne Summerflower's resume, applications. Oh, gosh. No, no, I'm looking.
It would be in the same email. Here. I'll send you another email with just that attachment, okay? And that'll be clear. Okay.
Very quickly on my end.
All right, here comes the email with just the meeting form attachment, and that should be easier to open and use. It's a Word document, so you can just kind of fill it in as you go.
PC Agenda doc, right?
Nope.
Meeting, I'm looking the old one, "Meeting form"?
Yep, "Meeting form."
Okay, I'm looking the old email, that's why.
Yeah, it should be a new one.
Okay, "Call to order at roll call" and then "Adoption of Agenda, Correspondence, Presentation", okay.
Yep, and you can just type in there, you know, basically the actions that are taken. All right. All right.
Great.
So was there any correspondence that people, and I would like to say that it's 7/6/7?
15.
15, and Commissioner Carteau has joined us. All right.
You want her to state where she's calling from?
Yeah, if you would just say, thank you.
Present in Scioto Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. All right. Communications and correspondence. Has anyone received any correspondence or other communications that they'd like to report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, we have no presentation scheduled, so we will, at this time, open the meeting for public comment. And this will be for public comment for items that are not on the agenda, i.e. the public hearing that we're having tonight on the suburban site plan. So anything else that the public would like to address the planning commission with? We'll start with online participants. You can indicate that you would like to provide a comment by clicking the "Raise your hand" button found at the bottom of the screen, if joining by computer or the top of your screen, if joining by tablet. Your microphone will be enabled one at a time until online participants have had the opportunity to speak once. And when you are unmuted by the host, you will see a dialog box that says, "Stay muted or unmute myself." Choose "Unmute myself" if you wish to speak. And I should indicate that if we have anyone in attendance, folks that are in person will be able to address the planning commission first. Thirdly, anyone who has joined by phone will have the opportunity to speak. You can raise your hand by pressing star nine and then press star six to unmute. Comments shall be limited to three minutes unless you're representing an organization, and then the time limit is five minutes. So we are opening for public at 7:17. Is there anyone that would like to address the planning commission on items not on this evening's agenda?
Rob Patterson has his name or his hand up, so I'm going to click the "Allow to Talk." And Mr. Patterson, you should be able to provide comment.
Thank you. I would like to request five minutes because I'm speaking about something that will affect the entire township. Last week, Representative Lizinski announced $750,000 of state money to put towards creating a safe pedestrian crossing over I-94 along the Zee Road Bridge. I believe it is the perfect time to finally build a true gateway to Scioto Township and to make a community center a big part of that idea. When our family moved here in 1976, it was a play desert in terms of facilities within walking or biking distance for kids to play and for families to have activities. In the following 45 years, that has not changed. There are no facilities for families within a mile or two of Zee and 94. Within, in recent years, the Park Zee subdivisions have added 750 homes in that small area alone. There are at least 2,000 homes within a mile of Zee and 94. I would guess there are 10 times as many families living in the area now as there were in 1976. And as I said, there is still no place to play or enjoy family activities. This is the perfect opportunity for the Buy Protect Sell program to procure the 300 North Sea property for the benefit of all in Scioto Township. The property at 300 North Sea has been left in blight by the current owner, Mav D., for 10 years. In 2005, it sold for $8.5 million. In 2009, it sold for $4.58 million. And in 2012, it sold for $1.36 million. I believe this is the perfect place to showcase the benefits of living in Scioto Township. I would suggest approaching the owner, Michael A. Lasek, to see if he would be willing to donate the property. He has chosen not to develop for 10 years. And I would also suggest naming the project the Michael A. Lasek Welcome Center to Scioto Township to encourage that donation. Granted, this is going to be an uphill effort to make this happen, and my research, Mav D. seems to intend to make tens of millions of dollars from this property with what I call the shoehorn project, because they want to shoehorn as much stuff into those 29 acres as they can. They've installed their employee, Jeff Harshy, on the DDA to make sure that happens. The Washtenaw County Road Commission will not allow the project to go forward until the increased traffic of the shoehorn project addresses the traffic impact of 484 residential units, a four-story hotel, a strip mall, and restaurants that will have to, will have, the traffic impact they will have on the Zee I-94 interchange. That is expected to cost $5 to $6 million, and thus the recent push by Jeff Harshy to get the township to pay for the North Zee Boulevard project. We recently heard a sewer and water presentation from OHM that the sewer system is slowly approaching capacity. It's likely this project would push the system past capacity and force the township to upgrade since 300 North Sea is in the DDA and therefore a part of the sewer and water system. This will cost additional millions to the township. Even if Mav D. decides not to donate the property and is willing to sell it for what they paid for it, the township will be several million dollars ahead because the community center won't bring the same amount of traffic, and widening Zee won't be necessary, and the sewer system won't need millions in upgrades. The Zee Road Bridge pedestrian project will take a few years to complete, and so will the community center. That's why now is the perfect time to get the LPC, Parks and Rec, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Trustees thinking about the benefits of this proposal could bring to Scioto Township. As members of the Planning Commission, I hope you join me in believing preserving the rural nature of Scioto Township is more important than developing it to increase tax revenue. A couple of weeks ago, I sent an email to the Board of Trustees asking them to forward the email to all members of the LPC, Parks and Rec, and Planning Commission. I hope you all got a copy of that email itemizing the numerous uses that could happen on this property by turning it into a community center. Seems to me Scioto Township would be much more attractive if people exiting I-94 saw a warm, welcoming community center with children and families playing and learning rather than a shoehorn project that would be an eyesore. I believe we have the opportunity to create a true gateway to Scioto Township if we have the courage to pursue it. I realize this is a big idea and will need a lot of work. Please feel free to contact me anytime if you would like to see the property. I would invite you to come over and park at our house, and we can walk over and see the potential of a Scioto Township community center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board of Planning Commission?
There are currently no other hands up. But there are quite a few folks here in the audience, so we'll wait a moment. So there are no other hands up at this point.
Okay, and no one in person that wishes to address the planning commission at public comment?
No one in the audience wishes to address the planning commission at this point.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close public comment. The motion is made by Commissioner Hyde, support by Commissioner Sharma. Commissioner Holland, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Sharma.
You're muted.
Here, sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Commissioner Carteau.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
You just...
Yes. Commissioner Chang. I don't know. Chairperson Gilbertson.
Yes, all right. We're doing it. Okay, and we're closing public comment at 7:24. Thank you. All right. Next, we're moving on to our business session. We do have an advertised public hearing, and that is for OA #2106 PUD, PSP #21013, Suburban Collection, Lithia Rezoning. And with this public hearing, we will hear from the petitioners' representatives first, our planning consultants and engineering consultants, and then the public who are present at the meeting hall, and then those joining us virtually, and then those by phone. So if you could promote the petitioners, or the applicants, please?
If you'd like to have us come up and sit at the table there. Put the camera on. If you can all fit, that's fine.
And do we have a sign-in sheet there?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, if everyone would please sign in under the public hearing, please. And you can just pass that around.
Shane, which one? Is this just continuation?
There should be one of public comment, and there should be one for the public hearing.
They're both public comments on your table right now.
So the applicant is in person, but they also are doing this via Zoom so that they can share their screen. And I think they just did that, so let me try to move this over so everybody can see.
Welcome. I think we are seeing your screen.
Oh, you do see it.
For folks, yeah, for folks who are virtual, we are...
We can't see the screen. Is that correct? Yeah, let me...
But we can see it here.
One thing to learn is to overcome on the technology side of things. Again, Shane Burley's screen. Okay. Okay, so everybody, so I just want to make sure you guys, Jan, you can see the screen, correct?
Yes, we can.
So everyone, and there's no one else in the audience here. It's just the applicant, so. Okay, very good. So go ahead.
You ready for us?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Ann Breck, and I'm the Senior Manager of Design and Compliance from Lithia Motors based in Medford, Oregon. And you may ask yourself, why is a company based in Oregon here tonight with a suburban collection? The suburban collection was acquired by Lithia six months ago. Lithia and Suburban both started in the 1940s as humble family businesses founded on providing products and services to local friends and neighbors. Our focus remains the same today. The Lithia and Suburban organizations come with three quarters of a century of dedication to serving the people in their communities with a true understanding of how to meet local needs. Shortly after the acquisition, we came before you with a preliminary site plan that was tabled. We listened to your feedback and went back to the drawing board to create a plan that is more tailored to the community while providing Lithia Suburban's state-of-the-art, energy-efficient, right-sized spaces to serve the community of Scioto Township. We focused on community, technology, and sustainability. One of the highlights of the plan is an eco-friendly space that includes a green space, a green space that will become a destination for those in the community with electric vehicles. Drivers worldwide are used to the idea that they can drive their gas burner into a fuel station anywhere, fill up in a few minutes, and be back on the road with little time lost. Electric car owners don't have that luxury yet, but with the introduction of an EV park, we are confident we will be on the forefront of change to alleviate range anxiety. This park will provide a space for drivers to pull up, use a fast charger, and have a space to sit and wait, maybe walk their dog, or enjoy their lunch in the park. The team with me tonight would like to take you through all the details of our updated plan. We have Brian Dandoran, our general manager for BMW, Mercedes, Jaguar, Land Rover. We have Jeff Huda from Nowark and Frost, and Shane Burley from Studio Detroit. I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Thanks, Ann. Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Brian Dandoran. As Ann said, I'm the general manager of Suburban's BMW and Mercedes-Benz stores and soon-to-be Jaguar Land Rover as well. And just a couple notes here. At our current facilities, we're in a lease that expires in the next 14 months. Our continued growth makes it necessary for us to build a new state-of-the-art facility that can fully support the needs of our community, our clients, our guests, and our team members. Our sales service and parts business has doubled over the last seven years at our current BMW and Mercedes-Benz locations. We want to have a permanent destination for our clients to call home for all of their vehicle needs. Now is the time for us to grow into being the best partner we can within the community and for our manufacturer partners. All three of our manufacturer partners have exciting new products coming soon. I'd like to highlight a couple of those this evening. BMW is introducing two all-new electric models in 2022 called the i4 and iX SUV, with many more to come in 2023. Mercedes-Benz will introduce a full suite of EQ or electric vehicles within the next two years, starting with their EQS sedan this fall, followed by an EQE sedan next year, and a full suite of EQ SUV models in 2023. Jaguar and Land Rover plan to be all-electric by 2025. So our proposal includes building for the future of our community and our clients with a state-of-the-art campus. This campus will house some of the world's most recognized luxury vehicle brands, including Mercedes-Benz, BMW, Jaguar, and Land Rover, along with state-of-the-art facilities and amenities that serve our guests and community. Thank you again for your time, and now I'll turn it over to Jeff Huda.
Thank you. From a historical standpoint, we've got, obviously been at this for quite a few years, and I think it was important to look at this property and the project from a historical context, just to kind of revisit why we're, where we're at today. A couple of years ago, it was determined, we were working with an entirely different township planning commission group. And at that time, there was a lot of going back and forth as far as how this site could be developed with dealership buildings on it. At that time, we believed that there was a pretty good understanding with that planning commission that dealerships would be permitted on this site. But one of the elements of this project that everybody was really concerned about that we were struggling with was the mixed-use piece. So for a couple of years, looking at it from a mixed-use component, we were marketing, the owners were marketing the mixed-use piece of this to attract a hotel, to attract some residential, to attract retail, something to combine with the proposed dealerships that would allow this to move forward as a mixed-use development PUD. Unfortunately, over that two-, three-year period, we never realized anybody that would actually come to the table and want to do that development at that time. So we came back before you, a couple months back, with a revised plan that basically showed a community benefit of being roughly a three-acre park on the west side of the site. And at that time, we don't believe that that was very well received. There was anxiety over counting it as open space. I think there was some level of thought there of double dipping, things of that nature. So what we have on the screen right now, that's the site location. Just go to the next slide, and I'll run through these really quick. This is the site, it's 18.4 acres. Quite a bit of that site is zoned as industrial right now with a residential component. It would be important to point out that during the original purchase of a lot of these properties, there were public hearings held at the township during that period of time, and there was very... And there was very strong indication from the existing owners that they really needed to see this property sold, developed, they needed to move on, they wanted to be bought out. And the main element of that was that they just didn't feel that this was a very good place for residential any longer. They wanted to move on to other areas of the, of the, within the region. Next slide. So there's zoning classifications, the I1 and the R2. Next slide. So one of the elements that were really, hurdle that we're trying to get over here is the idea of it being a mixed, mixed use development. I know that the Carl LaWortman letter, Doug's letter, had indicated that, you know, there's elements of this that they believe that are falling short. We respectfully interpret the ordinance maybe a little bit differently. We feel that maybe there is an opportunity there for mixed use for dealerships and some other element. Next slide. So as is defined in your ordinance, the intent of the MC district, which is mixed use commercial, is to provide areas where a mix of commercial, office, industrial, and high density residential land uses are encouraged. While general, retail, service, and office establishment are the primary uses envisioned for these areas, mixed uses, mixed use developments may also include more intensive commercial businesses. And then next slide. Those appropriate uses, which are defined in the ordinance, are general commercial, high density residential, more intensive commercial operations, office units uses, and a few others. Next slide. And then appropriate zoning districts, you know, the most appropriate, which is defined within your master land use is C2. That is very clear. But other districts appropriate in mixed use include C4, MR2, MR3, I1, and OS. You know, the dealerships fall within that C4 district. And, you know, when we look at and view that master plan, we believe that the dealerships are consistent with the C4 zoning classification, which is an appropriate zoning for mixed use development. Just to kind of reiterate a little bit on the topography of the site, there's a significant amount of elevation. We've got 30 feet of elevation fall from the southeast corner of the site towards the northwest corner of the site. And that in itself lends, is difficult from a developmental standpoint. No matter what you develop here, there's a lot of elevation here to contend with. So we've gotten very creative on the overall stormwater management and other aspects of the project. Next slide. So just kind of revisiting the, the old versus the new. The, this is the site plan that was presented to you at the, the last meeting. It included the, the auto prep center, which is located in the northeast quadrant of the site. It included the township park. And as you can see, the property is pretty dense as it relates to overall parking. The overall parking count on this particular plan was 980 parking spaces. So with that, there's other elements of the project. So next slide. So what we've heard you guys say at the last meeting was that, you know, that entered into how we reapproached this project was that Jackson Road is on a major bus transit line, so transportation was important. Not only motoring transportation, but also non-motorized transportation. You indicated at that time residential is desirable use for this property. Any park should be owned and maintained by the developer, I think is what you guys have indicated, that the township wasn't interested in taking that parkland off of the tax rules. The EDA weighed in on that and felt that that park needed to be remaining on the tax rules and that the developer should be operating and maintaining it. At that time, you felt that the donation of property was not a strong enough community benefit. And the other element that we took away was some of the natural preservation, saving some of the large oak trees along Delhi Drive, things of that nature. There were other comments, but prevailing, these were some of the things that helped guide us with the revised plan. So this is the, the updated version of the plan. And what is significant about this is we are adhering to the setback requirements along the I-94, whereas the, the old site plan was seeking a deviation there. We're adhering to setback requirements along Jackson Road where the deviation was being sought at that location. This plan, as it's being presented, significantly reduces the number of parking spaces from the 980 parking spaces that were proposed on the original plan to 761 spaces. So we've lost approximately 200 parking spaces as a part of redevelopment initiative here. We've eliminated the prep center building, so we've gone from four buildings to three buildings. Square footage of buildings has actually reduced significantly by 30,000 square feet. So from that standpoint, there's some improvements in that area. Delhi Drive, as it's contemplated right now, is not required to be vacated. The original plan did request it to be vacated. We're still not opposed to vacating Delhi Drive, but it's not relying upon Delhi Drive being vacated as a part of a redevelopment option. The open space on this project and assuming a similar type of a retail development, something along those lines to serve the mixed use piece on the west side of the site, we're exceeding the 30% open space calculation. I, I know that Mr. Luang's letter indicated that there was some concerns over how that was being calculated. We did, before this meeting, go back and revalidate that. And then we're approaching 32% on our open space calculation based on Mr. Luang's concerns there. So next slide. So this is the plan as it's being presented tonight, as an overall site plan. And I think you're going to hear a lot of positive things about the overall landscaping and stormwater management strategies. Because of the, the nature of the site having a tremendous amount of elevation, there's a lot of cascading that's going to occur with respect to the overall development of the Jackson Road corridor with the bio retention areas and the bio retention areas and the stormwater detention facility at the back of the site. Our goal in this overall development was to significantly increase the visibility of the Jackson Road corridor. You can see from the plan, we pulled the sidewalk back into the development. The goal there would be to grant the township or road commission, whoever's appropriate there, an easement for that sidewalk. But we wanted to provide for an experience, quite honestly, in going across the site. I think as you see some of the visual imagery that we will be presenting tonight, hopefully you will find that to be significant. We look at this as a potential education opportunity for people who are, for people who are non-motorized transportation folks. That as you're riding your bike or you're walking along Jackson Road, you're going to come across this and you're going to see this significant amount of interest. And you're going to be wondering what, what's going on, on this site? Why is this so much different than everything else that's around it? So that was, that was by purpose. We wanted to be able to draw people's attention to what we wanted to create along that Jackson Road corridor. And then drawing us into EV park. So in addition to this, if you're looking at the back end of the site, we've got significant, if you can use your mouse, that'd be great, significant stormwater detention facility there, which is more in keeping of a, like a created wetland. It's going to be very low as far as the storage depth and plantings in there. We really are excited about what that can become. And then to the east of there, we've got some significant bio retention bioswells. In addition to that, what we've done is we've integrated pervious pavement in majority of the perimeter parking. The idea there is to capture that rainwater, introduce it into the groundwater or groundwater recharge. And then anything above and beyond that first flush will cascade into some of the other stormwater management facilities. So I think overall, this is a very impactful stormwater management program for this site. So I just wanted to give you that high level view. So next slide. So some of the sustainable features that were identified on this particular plan was the open space. We will retract back from the 35 that's shown on the screen right now to the 32, based on how Mr. Luang would like to have that calculation represented. This plan promotes electrification and non-motorized transportation. We believe that that element of the project is in concert with the goals of Sciop Township from a sustainability viewpoint. We talked about the well-developed stormwater management strategies, bioswells, wetlands, permeable pavements. We have enhanced energy efficient buildings with envelopes. That's not something that we can create or recreate within the existing envelopes at the motor mall. We have dark sky compliant exterior lighting proposed as part of this project. And then overall, just a significantly enhanced landscaping for visual screen and overall environmental benefit. I think that when you look at the precedent imagery that we have here, hopefully the thought that you guys have is that, one, these buildings are super attractive. And secondly, as it relates to how they integrate into landscaping, they don't look like that traditional dealership. These are more boutiquey type dealerships. And I think from that standpoint, are certainly different than your traditional dealership. So kind of some precedent images here. Hopefully you can kind of see the, you know, what our thought process is. But those inlay photos are what our inspiration is, what we think that these elements are going to become as it relates to that. So in the, along the Jackson Road corridor, we have a stone spillway that will cascade across maybe like a waterfall type feature. So when it rains, it's cascading down Jackson Road and just providing a significant element of interest for people who are traversing along Jackson Road. The permeable pavers, whether that's pavers, whether it's permeable concrete, we want to promote that. And that's, there's a significant amount of that element integrated into the overall project. So I think from a stormwater management standpoint, hopefully you agree that we really hit the mark on that. So then when we look at Jackson Road frontage, there's some more precedent imagery there on what that would look like, on how those bioswells would, would function. Very, very well proportioned, a tremendous educational opportunity. If the township desires, we'd love to, to broadcast that, provide some level of educational placards along the frontage to educate people and, and the importance of stormwater, of sustainable stormwater management strategies. So one of the elements that really was difficult to, I think, I said difficult when you, when we heard you talking, was what was that community benefit? And I think that hopefully you guys understand the significance of what is being offered here as a community benefit, not only from a monetary standpoint, but also from a, just a sustainability, a transformation from gasoline powered vehicles to electric vehicles, and how that infrastructure is going to be implemented and resonates within the township. If you drive up and down Jackson Road corridor, which I did before this, I didn't see much in the way of electrical vehicle charging opportunities. And that's quite indicative of, of most areas. That's the biggest challenge that we have facing us with electrification is how are people going to feel comfortable in the future in getting into their EV and providing, especially in long distances? And I'm one of those guys. I've been on the fence now for two years. I am super interested in electrical vehicles, but the range is something that gives me anxiety. I'm not comfortable right now jumping into that because I don't have a convenient location to go to charge for a longer distance. I want to go see my folks if I want to, you know, my folks are 500 miles away. How do I do that, you know? And from electrical vehicle charging standpoint, it's a very, very difficult challenge right now. So one of the things that we are really focused on and proud, and we feel our partnership with the township on from an overall sustainability viewpoint, is providing what we're calling EV park. EV park is giving an opportunity for people who are commuting within the township, people who are traveling, to have a commercial charging station in proximity to the Z Road intersection where they can go and charge their vehicle. The idea behind it is that somebody who might be traveling is going to pull off, visit a restaurant, grab a sandwich. They could take it down to EV park, plug in their car, eat their sandwich, and be able to charge their car at the same time. Those are elements that I think, you know, as a society, we're going to be struggling to, to figure out as we move forward. You know, President Biden's infrastructure plan is something that is very significant in trying to develop that type of infrastructure. And we feel that this type of a program would put Sciop Township ahead of the curve with respect to a lot of that. In addition to the charging stations, we would want to have some other smart amenities, tables that would have some sort of a Wi-Fi hotspot where people could plug in, have a Wi-Fi connection, and do some internet searches, charge their phones, charge their devices, things of that nature. All of that would have some applicability in this park. There's an article that came out over the weekend from USA Today, and it speaks to how expensive it is these days. It, it actually counteracts a, a study that was done by the University of Michigan that proclaims that EV, electrical vehicles are cheaper to operate than, sorry, electrical vehicles are cheaper to operate than gasoline powered vehicles. So from that standpoint, and what they were really relying upon were a couple of different factors. And one of those being, you know, people are driving around having to find where these charging stations are, which is adding additional miles and additional cost. There's additional costs associated with setting up a charging station at your home. All of those things were factored in. And the conclusion of that particular study was that at this particular point, it is pretty expensive, unless it's just local. If you're a local user where you're just charging it at home, on your, your home, and you're going to the grocery store and back, then yes, that is cheaper than your, than, than your electrical charging, but, gasoline power. But if you are looking to travel a long distance, that charging and gasoline, they're, they're fighting each other right now with respect to how that cost is. So with that said, we, we believe that there's a need for this type of infrastructure. This is not cheap infrastructure. Each charging station costs between $20,000 and $30,000 to install. So you're looking at, from an infrastructure standpoint, to put in 12 charging stations, close to $200,000 in investment. So that alone is a pretty significant community benefit. In addition to that, with the full development of EV park into something that makes it a destination for non-motorized transportation, things of that nature, you're really focusing on something that is closer to that $4,000 to $500,000 of investment to construct that park. So here's a perspective of what that park would look like, could look like. Showing the electrical charging stations flanking each side, so six on each side, so a total of 12. Of those charging stations, we would expect that a minimum of Of those charging stations, we would expect that a minimum of two of those would be what was considered a Level 2 charging station, which is a DC fast charging station. The remaining charging stations would be a Level 3 charging station. We still need to work out some of those elements. Our goal is to provide as many Level 2 charging stations as possible. A Level, so the difference between a Level 2 and a Level 3, a Level 2 charging station generally can charge a car, depending on battery size, there's a lot of elements to it, but basically bring it to an 80% charge within like 30 minutes, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. A Level 3 charging station is one of those ones that basically in your house, that basically you're, you're charging it for 24 hours to be able to get to that type of a charge. So with that, again, we believe that the township goals and our owner goals at this point are aligned for that perspective. So some precedent images there, you know, maybe the benches have a solar cell array to it so that, again, we have some electrical, some opportunity in transitioning to more of that sustainable-type model there. Again, some, some images on some of the bio soils, the benches over on the left-hand side of the screen, being able to plug in, have a Wi-Fi spot there, would be relative and important. And then, of course, the charging stations themselves. So with that, I know this is a long presentation, but there are a lot of elements to this project that are worth noting. I'm going to turn it over to Shane, he's going to talk a little bit about the building and the architecture.
Good evening, thank you. We really went back to the drawing board with this one after the previous comments, and, you know, we squeezed these buildings down. You know, we took out roughly 6,000 square feet from Mercedes-Benz and 6,000 from BMW, deleted the prep center. Jaguar Land Rover was a bit smaller in nature, that one ended up staying approximately the same as it is. But I kind of, you know, we put together some imagery showing, you know, how these three, you know, beautiful iconic flagship facilities kind of work with each other and work with the site and really, you know, drive home the architecture and design and, you know, EV Park as well. Starting on the left or the west side of the site, we have a BMW building, a single-story. BMW is at 34,000 square foot total. Jaguar Land Rover is in the middle, that one comes in at 23,000. And then Mercedes-Benz on the far east side is roughly 44,000 square feet. Again, we're kind of showing how we really pulled that landscaping into the site. I think, you know, it doesn't look like, look and feel like a traditional car dealership. The inventory lots are heavily screened to the north. You know, these buildings are set back from Jackson Road. In most cases, there's just a single row of parking in front of the buildings. Again, it's a, it's a different feeling, and, you know, something that I think really is great, it's just great, different feel. Even the buildings themselves, I mean, these aren't your traditional structures. We're talking cantilever roofs, lots of glass, metal panels, high-speed overhead doors, you know, things that make, you know, sustainable architecture, really bring home even the color palettes, you know, cool roof reflects some of the heat back into the sky, keep out all that building. But again, you know, marry that with the landscaping. This image right here is, you know, how these bio soils work along Jackson Avenue. I think it's really unique to, as a pedestrian, to be able to approach them, to see them up, you know, up close, to touch and feel and understand how they work, what are they doing exactly, how they're cleaning the stormwater, how they're, you know, recycling and putting it back into the ground. EV Park itself has the potential for, you know, the community educational aspect. Speak about the technology. Let's educate people about how these electric vehicles operate, work, charge, not only through the use of just information, but, you know, having the chargers themselves out on site. We're not talking just a Tesla charger, you know, we want to provide electric charging for all makes and models. To the far west end of the site, we left room for the mixed-use component. You know, without that currently, you know, we still are over our 30% open space requirement. We would propose to continue that path, connect it on both the east and west-hand sides, continue the landscaping, the bio soils, the fence requirement, and really just make that whole in a way. Just kind of zooming in real quick on the Mercedes building. Again, you can see just this double row of parking up front, customer parking, inventory, a little bit of inventory up front, celebrate the plazas, make the access to service drives easy, intuitive, and then landscape all around. Additional views from Mercedes. Showing those EV chargers in front of each dealership, a couple on each side, in addition to the 12 that we're putting on the park. Jaguar Land Rover is again sighted in the middle. We've left no parking in front of Jaguar. It is green from the storefront all the way out to Jackson Road. Again, you can see the path connecting all three dealerships, clear view in front of And then on the far west end, we have BMW. And as well as a future retail, commercial, mixed-use component. Lots of glass, lots of natural light, really taking advantage of the views. And then charging stations again. And I believe that's really it for the architecture side.
So sorry for the long-winded presentation, but there were a lot of changes to kind of highlight, and hopefully we've been able to communicate, you know, our vision for what this site can become and how it is in concert, hopefully with the goals and objectives of the township.
Thank you very much for your thorough presentation, and I'd like to move to Carla Wartman's report and then OHM's report.
Okay, if you guys can stop your screen share. Okay.
You know what? I have to go back because I don't think we opened the public hearing. Did we do that?
No.
Okay. I, we need to do that. Sorry. May I have a motion to, I guess I can declare the public hearing open, and then we'll continue. All right. So I need to declare the public hearing open. I think I, and go ahead, Mr. Luhan, and we'll continue with the presentation.
Just want to make sure I have my list of folks at home, so I can call on them when the time comes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so for those at home and those that might watch this tape later, just like to go real quickly over the process first. This is a, being proposed, this project's being proposed as a planned unit development, and a planned unit development is a, it's a rezoning to a specific plan. The benefits of a planned unit development are that it's kind of a site plan and a rezoning all in one, kind of one package, so an applicant doesn't have to go through a rezoning process and a site plan process, it's kind of puts them together. It also allows some flexibility to an applicant that they might not have otherwise under the standard zoning. In this particular case, the property, as was mentioned by the applicant, has a split zoning of I-1 and single-family residential, so under the current zoning, auto dealerships aren't permitted. So the planned unit development approach would allow a rezoning to a specific plan. Now, the PUD process itself is a two-step process. There's a preliminary PUD step and a final PUD step. We are in the preliminary PUD phase of this project. Preliminary PUD phase has a public hearing in front of the planning commission, action by the planning commission, and the, and the, the action from the planning commission is a recommending action only. So the planning commission, regardless of what you guys do tonight, you're not approving anything, you're only, you will only be recommending a project, either recommending approval or recommending denial. Someone just turned on their speaker. And then we'll go on to the township board for a final decision of preliminary PUD. After preliminary PUD, we kind of go through this again, it will come back in front of the planning commission for, for a recommendation, and then to the township board for a final decision. So I think I mentioned this last meeting because we had a PUD end before, at a very minimum, we're in the applicant, and we are in for four meetings of this project, and that would be best-case scenario, and if we got recommended for approval tonight, and recommended for approval at township board, if anywhere during this process, the PUD plan is postponed or tabled, you know, add a meeting to it, but best case, we've got four meetings. So that's the, that is what this is, it's a planned unit development, try to explain why applicants go this route, and who actually approves the project. The applicant's, you know, obviously done a very thorough job of going through the project description, so I will not go through that part of our report. We'll kind of go through some of the requirements for preliminary PUD, and really on page, page two and three, we kind of talk about the preliminary PUD and the requirements on, of a preliminary PUD. And on page three, we have a little table there that indicates all the required information. And applicants provided all the required information except for one element in their package. Now, I think they've done a nice job of describing what we're looking for here, but a project narrative is required for preliminary PUD, and that's supposed to talk about the project and the benefits and things like that. The applicant verbally has done that this evening, and I'm sure if the planning commission has any questions, they could ask, but with a planned unit development, it's always good to have this stuff in writing, and so we would like to see a written, kind of written narrative of, I think it would be very similar to what we, what we just heard tonight about some of the benefits and some of the things applicants trying to accomplish through this development, and why, frankly, why the township should entertain a planned unit development. As I said, a planned unit development is, it's one of these cases where the township is, in a way, giving something, in that we would be giving a zoning designation that we wouldn't normally allow on this site. It's currently zoned industrial and residential. And in return for the township to, you know, be, be giving the zoning part of it, and that there may also be some flexibility in the plan itself, but the applicant is supposed to be providing some kind of public benefit. So there's, there's the, you know, what the applicant wants, and then what they are providing to the township to, to kind of justify this treatment as a planned unit development. So those are, and a lot of that could be addressed to a certain degree in the project, in a very detailed project narrative. Again, some of that was addressed verbally this evening. So one of the things we, and we'll get back into the PUD standards in a moment, but one of the big things we look at, since a PUD is a rezoning, one of the big things we always look at in a rezoning is the, is the master plan or future land use map. So the future land use map, as was mentioned by the applicant, is planned as mixed-use commercial. So mixed-use commercial, the, there's kind of a black-and-white answer and a little more nuanced of an answer. The black-and-white answer, if you look in the current master plan, is that the designation that most closely follows the mixed-use commercial designation is C2 general commercial. C2 general commercial is our typical retail, commercial, strip center, you know, kind of retail stuff, restaurants, office, medical buildings, things like that. The applicant is proposing three dealerships that would only be permitted in the C4 district. So therein lies why a PUD is being requested. The applicant could also request a straight C4 rezoning, that would require a rezoning in a site plan. The disadvantage of a straight C4 rezoning is, one, it's even further off from the master plan, and, two, there's no, there's, there's no opportunity for this kind of give and take with the township and the applicant. So PUD allows for some of this, you know, what are we getting for public benefit? If you, if the applicant was to request a straight C4 zone, it's just C4, and, and we can place no, the township has no ability to ask for anything else, it's just C4 is it. So in a way, by going through this PUD process, there's, I don't know if negotiation's really the right word, but more of a possibility for some back and forth between the township and the applicant, and maybe getting a better development than we might otherwise get. That all being said, the master plan, the, the black and white of it is C2 general retail would be permitted, and we mentioned in our report also where, while that said, there is also some discussion for higher-intensity commercial uses. And so there's, you know, those higher-intensity commercial uses, however, are talked about with a mixed-use project. And right now, the way this is presented, there's a possibility of mixed use on the western edge of the property, which could be retail or a park or who knows what. And this is where the planning commission's going to, and ultimately, the township board's going to have to be comfortable that what is being proposed is a mixed-use project, is, is, is open space, is the EV park, are some of the things the applicant is proposing, do those all taken together begin to, you know, begin to bubble up into this idea of a mixed-use project? It, it may, but that's something that, under, under our items to be addressed, we think the planning commission has to consider this conformance with the township master plan. The black and white of it is, the master plan's really calling for C2 general retail, but there are some, there is some other verbiage in the master plan designation that would seem to, you know, not think a C4 zoning is the worst thing that could happen on this site. However, it's kind of couched that maybe there's a mixed use going on here, which in this derivation of the plan, you know, there's no mixed use, it's just, it's just C4 zoning with a, with a park. I shouldn't say there's no mixed use, it's really, that has to be discussed and thought about by the planning commission, and that is, that is a relatively big issue. So with regard to the PUD standards, there are a number of PUD standards, we, we list them in our report, there are four of them. I won't read through them again because they cover about two pages of our report, and I think I've talked a little bit about them in just the general description of what a PUD is. But a big one here, and one that I think the applicant was trying to, trying to describe, is the recognizable and material benefit that this project might bring the township. And And of course, they went through a lot of those items. So that, that's a big part of, does this project rise to the level of qualifying for planned unit development? Is there, you know, is there this benefit to the community that the applicant is proposing? With regard to natural features, much of the natural feature information is really, would be addressed more at the final PUD stage. But we do have some, because there are some trees particularly on, with regard, a little bit on the east and of course, a lot on the west, you know, we want to be very clear about what trees are going to be removed. And then for the applicant to clearly depict those trees that are going to be removed and those to be preserved. You know, tree preservation certainly can be, could be viewed as a, as a benefit to this project as well. We do mention some soil constraints. These soil constraints were picked up on the Washtenaw County or the, really the USGS Soil Survey. And so these are very high-level soil types. And we indicate that there could be some soil constraints for the construction of commercial buildings. We found that generally those can be overcome, but we raised those because we think it's valuable. Do so, at least for no other reason, to alert the applicant that there could be some issues. A traffic study may need to be provided for this project. The Washtenaw County Road Commission is the body that determines if a traffic impact study is required. The way our ordinance is written, that we defer to the Washtenaw County Road Commission. If they want a traffic study, then the traffic study is required. And then we will review it as part of the, as part of the development. We review a lot of projects. Some projects have an obvious traffic impact element to them. Generally, with our experience with automobile dealerships, automobile dealerships generally are not huge traffic generators. Probably, the owners would probably like them to be greater traffic generators. But it's not as if it's an office building where you've got a ton of people showing up at nine o'clock and a ton of people leaving at five o'clock. Dealerships sort of are evening, somewhat during the day, sometime on the weekend. So a little bit more spread out. And of course, Syo Township has an awful lot of dealerships. And I don't anecdotally recall very many issues with traffic on the existing dealerships that we have in the township. With regard to essential facilities and services, this site is within the sewer and water district within the township. I think it's another, it's kind of important also to mention that we have been, we have been and are and will be looking at projects within the township, within the sewer service district, that are, are and can be relatively high users of sewer and water. We always have this discussion about how much capacity Syo Township has in their sewer service, sewer service district. And again, kind of like traffic, automobile dealerships are generally very low users of sewer and water service. And these would be the types of uses that would not be big users of our utilities and might preserve those utilities for other, other parts of the Jackson Road corridor. So something that will certainly be reviewed in more detail and perhaps, I know Sally Boss, Township Engineers, online, perhaps she can talk about this a little more in her, in her comments when that time comes. Now, with regard to the PUD design standards, there are some specific design standards that we, that we list out on page eight and nine of our report. Mr. Guda already hit on one of the items about the open space calculation. Sounds like they're still fine, but they, I think that has to be adjusted a little bit. And I believe they had mentioned that all of the C-4 zoning designation standards can be met, that that would be the standard we would use. By the way, when you're, when you're looking at a planned year development, you apply the zoning standards of the district that the use would be permitted in. And so this is a C, dealerships are only permitted in the C-4 district. So the C-4 zoning standards are the standards that we'd be using in this case. And again, as was mentioned by the applicant, we, we asked them to demonstrate that the 52-foot required perimeter buffer along I-94 be maintained. And apparently, it's being maintained according to their verbal comments. With regard to the site plan, we get into parking loading. We just want to make sure that the required parking is clearly designated on the site as opposed to car storage. They're proposing 771 total spaces. 211 are required parking spaces. That's for customers and employees. And then the remainder are presumably car storage spaces. But typically, we like, we like to see those very clearly designated on the site plan of what's employee, customer parking, what's storage. And in this case, there's also a number of EV parking spaces, which could change that calculation a little bit. We have some, some very specific things about barrier-free parking. Sure, the applicant can address those. We don't, I don't have to get into any detail on that. A general landscape plan was included in the plan set. A detailed plan would be required at the final, if this proceeds to the final PUD stage review. I will note with regard to some of the plan sheets, what was happening on the west, what was happening on the west side of the site was not always consistent. There was, in one of the plan sheets was a shopping center, and one of the plans sheet showed a park, and then one of the plan sheet kind of showed a smaller park with, and so I think it's in, you know, that, that little, that, that vacant parcel, vacant piece to the west, if this project is to move forward, I think that's got to get tied down a little bit more carefully, depending on what, what exactly you guys want. And, or maybe it's not tied down, and there's just a range of uses that could occur there at some time. But I think there was three different sheets I noticed that showed three different things, and we got, that's got to be tied down a little tighter. Or loosened up altogether. So it's really up to you guys. We need a detailed lighting plan, detailed signage plan, if this proceeds to the final stage of our review. The, this project, while it's a PUD, it's also in the Jackson Road overlay district. There are some architectural standards in the Jackson Road overlay district. We mentioned those. We would, now, I appreciate the architectural part of the, part of the presentation. It would, it would appear that you are meeting all of those standards, but generally, what we like is for an applicant to kind of show, go through the Jackson Road overlay standards and indicate A, B, C, D, E, you're meeting this, you're meeting this, you're meeting this, just to make sure you're meeting those. And then with regard to PUD deviations, if any PUD deviations are being requested, they should be clearly marked on the site plan. So we have 22 items that need attention or some comment from the applicant and the planning commission. I think that, I think the two biggest items in our, from our standpoint are, one, the applicant providing a project narrative that outlines all the stuff that we heard tonight, so that we have something to hang our hat on if this project is to move forward. And the second kind of big-picture item is that the planning commission, this evening, have some discussion. I can help, I can help in that discussion about the master plan and the planning commission's thoughts on conformance with the plan. And then, of course, the potential public benefit of this project as a PUD. So those are the real big issues. And I will turn it over back to you, Chairperson Culberson.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move to OHM's report, and then we'll go to public comment. And then we'll open it up for commissioners, questions and discussion.
All right. Thank you, Jan. Good evening, everyone. Our letter was dated September 28th of 2021. We had some planned unit development comments, and then we also had a number of preliminary site plan comments. So I will go through those briefly. As Doug mentioned, the public benefits provided as part of the PUD rezoning need to be a little further defined. We defer discussion, negotiation, and approval of those benefits to the Township Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees. We do recommend that anything that is relating to infrastructure improvements or contributions to infrastructure improvements are reviewed by our office, just so we can help out the township there and make sure all of those are identified. If a traffic impact study is required by the road commission, we would like a copy of that for our files, as well as township will need a copy. Doug touched on this as well, providing additional details on the mixed-use portion of the project on the west side of the site, specifically on our end, including water and sanitary stubs and usage, as well as stormwater management, and how that will tie into the system that the applicant is currently proposing. And then the applicant did touch on this verbally tonight, but they need to clarify if the existing West Alhaj Road will be proposed to remain a public road, or if it will be vacated, and if it will provide, continue to provide access to the existing property to the northeast. And we included that text ID in our letter for reference. Then moving into our preliminary site plan comments, we will need an overall utility plan sheet within the plans. The applicant will also need to provide a preliminary sanitary sewer basis of design to let us know what type of usage they're going to be. We do not have that information yet, so I can't give you a capacity recommendation of how it is. One of the big things that factors into usage for car dealerships is how many car washes they have. Often, as part of the service building section, they have, they have a car wash. Those do use a lot more water than buildings that don't. So we need to know where those are, as well as the oil-water separators. All the existing and proposed utilities shall be overlaid with the landscape plan, just to make sure we're not conflicting with any large trees. And then we had a little bit of a separation issue on some of the services. Those do need to be 10 feet apart per Syo Township standards. We had some stormwater management calculation comments here, one of them being, we need preliminary calculations for all of the basins and the bioswales, just to make sure they're adequately sized so that we're not having to change parking once we go into the detailed engineering section of this. Soil erosion, we need to address. We need soil boring logs and locations, as well as infiltration testing locations, just so we can verify all of that stormwater. There's a couple of housekeeping things in here for the stormwater as well that I won't touch on. They're very minor. Plan clarifications. For the site layout, it does currently appear that there may be some conflicts between the fire truck turning template for access and some of the curb and parking spots. So we would like the applicant to clarify that. And we also would like the applicant to clarify if a designated car hauler location has been provided. We want to make sure that that does not conflict with the emergency access fire truck plan as well, just so that if a car hauler happens to be parked on the site and they have a fire, we want to make sure everybody can get in and out appropriately. There are a few paving and grading comments. We need an overall grading plan with proposed and existing contours to make sure that stormwater flows correctly, as well as preliminary elevations for the retaining wall. And there was a minor typo in the grading along the entrance drive at Jackson Road that we need the applicant to clarify for us. And then there were a couple of general comments, very minor housekeeping. Clarify if the existing houses and/or utilities have already been removed, and clarify what trees will be removed. And then provide a lighting plan. And we had a minimum of two benchmarks also need to be provided. So we had four PUD comments and 20 site plan comments that we would like to be addressed before moving this forward.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to now open in the same rules for the public comment as the public comment during the public hearing. So if there are any folks that are at the township hall, they will be first. Next will be the folks that are joining by computer, and then those joining by phone. So at this point, we will open this public hearing up to public input.
There is, there is no one in the audience except the applicant.
So then we'll move to, and I, I just noted that it's 8:30, and welcome, Commissioner Chang. Thank you. And so Commissioner Sharma, from this point on, we'll move and have the secretary move, shift to Commissioner Chang. So if you could maybe email what you've got so far, or, you know, at the end of the meeting to Commissioner Chang, we can, he'll consolidate the minutes. Okay? Thank you very much. All right. So folks that are joining via computer.
Okay. At this point, no one has their hand up from, we have eight attendees. We have eight attendees, and no one has their hand up at this point.
And no one from, that is joined by phone?
There are no phone numbers listed on the list.
All right. Okay. We'll just wait a, maybe 30 seconds or so, make sure. And while we're waiting, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And then I do want the, the discussion to be, one, questions of the petitioner, Carlisle Wartman or OHM, and then really focus on the conformance with the master plan and community benefit, because I think this, that's critical to this PUD moving along. So.
There are no, no hands up.
So I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Commissioner Hyde, support by Commissioner Cartel. Right. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Secretary Chang.
Sorry.
Welcome. We're putting you to work right away, right?
Yep, it really is. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Cartel.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang. Yes. And Commissioner Culberson.
Yes. And was there a Commissioner Holland?
Yes. I was called.
Okay, great. Thanks. All right. Then we're closing the public hearing at 8:33. All right. Then we'll open for question, petitioner Carlisle Wartman, OHM, as, as well as trying to focus the discussion on conformance with the master plan and community Commissioners, who would like to, who has some questions, comments, considerations? Commissioner Hyde.
Yes, thank you. I have a few questions, but I'll just start off with saying, I really appreciate the presentation, and there's been quite a few changes, and there's quite a few more questions as a result. But as, as was stated by Carlisle Wartman, there was some concern about the calculation for the open spaces. And I would ask the petitioner if they were calculating the open spaces as was shown with the retail store in, in place, or, and there was a drawing toward the end of the presentation that showed the retail store in place. I'm trying to find which page it's on, but you know, the one, and there's green shown, highlighted for the remaining open space that was not part of the retail, that's way over on the west side. But then there's also green on some of the islands that are, that were shown around that. So was that the calculation that showed 32? So was that the calculation that showed 32 to 35%? Or was it the one where the open space on the west side was left natural? And there was another drawing in there, as Carla reported out, that had much of it undeveloped. And that appears to be the 35%, but I'm, I guess I'm asking, how did you calculate that? Which of those two proposals, so?
So for the other commissioners, let me just say, I think that's page 65 for Site Plan 1.1.
Thank you. Yeah, I see it now.
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify that. I, I think what, we've calculated it based on Mr. Luwan's comments in his letter. If we can share the screen right now. So I apologize for the confusion as it relates to that west end of the development. Our, our overall hope was that if, if, when the project is moved forward, that we would work together to define, leaving it loose, as Mr. Luwan had indicated, but define what uses you guys would be comfortable in having on that site and, and grain that into the actual PUD itself. What we're showing on the screen is a retail center. What we wanted to do is to demonstrate that that retail center, it does function, it does meet the requirements. And as it relates specifically to open space calculation, with this retail development as it's shown right now and looking at the entire property, we're at about 31.5% open space. If we were to take this off and exclude the western two acres, which is really being set aside for future development, that the remaining dealership piece on its own, excluding that two acres of future development, would exceed 31% of open space. So either way, we meet that requirement. We did not include, and I think this is to your point, Mr. Hyde, is that we did not include that large area of green space in the open space calculation to make a determination.
Okay, thank you. If you could refer back to the page 65 of the agenda folder. I, I don't know how to get you there if you don't have the agenda on your computer. But in there, that has the retail store, as you just showed. And then there's green highlighting all around the perimeter and some in the middle. Is the green area the 31% that you're talking about?
Can I come up and see that? I can't see it on this screen, sorry.
I'd share my screen, but my internet connection is pretty poor.
Yes, so the, the green area, the green area that's shown on that plan, I think what Mr. Luwan had asked was that some of the islands and things of that nature be removed. So that plan is the plan that shows the 35% open space. By subtracting out the areas that Mr. Luwan had asked, that's dropped it down to that 31 to 32%.
I see, so okay, so if we took out the islands and that are in the middle in the parking lot, that'd be good. But are you including the bioswales in that calculation?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'd ask Mr. Luwan, is that undisturbed? I mean, I think in the, in the ordinance, it requires that it be undisturbed or natural. I'm not quite sure of the wording. Does this, does that bioswale count? Is that if, after it's been reworked?
Storm, storm detention areas can be counted towards open space if they're in a natural state. So if, if someone was to put in like an old fashioned cigar-shaped detention basin and put a fence around it, no, that could not be included. But if they were doing, I think what they're proposing to do, like bio, you know, bioswales and native plantings and things like that, that, that could in fact be included.
Excellent, that's what I was hoping, because I didn't want it to be in conflict. And then these bioswales, this is my final comment right now, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to others. But on those bioswales or rain gardens, you call them both, is that going to be maintained by the owners in perpetuity?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll just be that, those questions for now.
Okay, other commissioners that have questions or comments, concerns? Commissioner Cartel.
Thank you. So I want to echo Mr. Hyde, Commissioner Hyde, in saying, I, I see all the effort that went into this plan and appreciate you've addressed many, many concerns. And I really do like more the natural landscaping and the sustainability features. I do share some of the concerns that Mr. Luwan has outlined for us. Specifically, does this conform with the master plan? And, you know, leaving open that mixed-use component with the still unknown retail. I, I guess this question is really more for Mr. Luwan. Can, can you describe how that's worked for us in the past on some of these projects in the Jackson Road overlay in terms of having outlots for future development? It, can, can you fill in the history of, of how that's actually worked in practice? If we're, if we're trying to look at community benefits and don't even know what the future of part of might be?
Yeah. We've got a little, a little history on some smaller projects and not necessarily PUD projects. Because if you remember, the Jackson Road Overlay District allows some mixing of uses, but it has to be a, you know, mixed-use project. So one that comes to mind that might be similar in, in a, in a way to this project is the condo project and where Leo's Coney Island is, just south of Myers. Because that project was all zoned C2 general commercial. And the applicant wanted to do multifamily. And so what they did to show that it was a mixed-use project is they provided two commercial outlots in the front. Well, they, the developer at the time had no intention of building commercial. Their real interest was the, was the condos to the west. And so the two, you know, it was, it was accepted by the township, and this was, you know, 10 years ago or so, that, that a mixed-use project was, could include those vacant lots. And so those are two outlots. Now, since the condos were built, you know, Leo's Coney Island and that spa have, have appeared on one of the outlots, there is still one vacant outlot. So in that sense, that was a case where we accepted a mixed-use project, while not a PUD, so not exactly the same, but a mixed-use project where we had two vacant lots, where we didn't know what was going to happen, but they, but they were designated for commercial. There, the only other one I can think of right now that we did as a PUD was the, is the Woodview project that's going to be in front of, actually be in front of the Township Board tomorrow. And if, if you remember the Woodview project, again, the developer was more interested in residential, but that project, in fact, in that case, that project was zoned agricultural, because it was in the very, kind of the western part of Jackson, Baker Road. And the applicant was required as part of the PUD to kind of show us what they were going to do with that retail. And in fact, that, in the plan that I believe the Township Board's going to see tomorrow night, the retail part of that project is phase one. So under the current plan, that retail is actually going to happen. So we've kind of gone, I think, we've, we've gone both ways with this. We've gone where we've allowed just a vacant outlot to be counted towards the mixed use. And then we've kind of, we're a little more strict with the Woodview project in requiring them to actually come up with some buildings, building design. What's the architecture going to look like? What's landscaping going to look like? How much parking are you going to need? And so they had, you know, a, a much more developed plan than, than the one south of Myers. So probably not the clearest answer for you, but it's, we have had kind of this range of, this sort of range of possibilities that the township has accepted in the past.
Okay, thank you. And then I wondered if I could follow up with the applicants on the community benefit portion. I appreciate the EV charging station as a public benefit. And that sounds like, you know, really something potentially innovative. I wonder if you could tell us a little bit more, though, about how that's going to work? Are you envisioning those as coin-operated chargers? Is there going to be signage to help direct people? Because given that it's inside a car dealership, I just wonder how much of the public will be able to look at that as potentially a publicly available resource? Can, can you help us understand how, how you'll make that really accessible to the community?
Well, there's an app for that. There is, so anyways.
So as part of the, one of the cornerstones at Lithia that we're working on developing is an arm of our business called Green Car. And we're developing an app so that a customer or, or anyone can have this app and they know where all the charging stations are for their EV vehicle. We're still in the very early phases of designing this park, but we do know that when we're selling something as a community benefit, there has to be some portion that's available for the consumer or the community member to use and not be charged a fee for. So it could be that the first hour could be free charging, and then there may be an ability to swipe a credit card or like a parking meter, you would pay a, a fee to charge the remaining portion of your car. But again, we're in the very early development of this and know that we want to create something that the customer can come or the community member can come and use this without necessarily having to always pay for the charging.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's my questions for right now.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Moore? You're unmute.
Could the, could the applicant unshare their screen? Thank you. I too wanted to congratulate the presentation today, because I, I think there was an effort to, to address some of the issues that were raised at the last meeting. But I have to say, my concerns lie with the compatibility of our master plan. And this project just doesn't seem to be compatible with the plan. So I for one would be, I, I don't want to lead on anybody. I think the EV station is a remarkable idea, but I'm not sure that that would be efficient over the issues related to the master plan. Because I think we want residential on Jackson Road, and that's the very reason, or that's a good thing, the existing zoning. So I just wanted to be upfront with the applicant. The remarks as part of the presentation were not lost on me. Apparently, there were other people here before, two years ago or one year ago, whatever, discussions, people who were on the master plan, people who were involved in township government, willing to put aside the master plan to accommodate this project. I'm not one of those that, that is, fits into that camp. I mean, our, our current master plan and our revised master plan would have the same direction for that kind of land, future land use. So I don't see how, I don't see how that was something that wasn't taken into consideration in the earlier conversations. Although I'm, I'm, you know, very, like I say, the remarks were not lost on me, the historical remarks, prior by township, perhaps SIO Township Board members or other SIO Township planning commissioners. All I wanted to say.
Thank you. Other commissioners who would like to comment or have any questions? Commissioner Chang and then Commissioner Holland.
Yeah, I, I, first let me apologize. I, I don't want Mr. Luwan to have to go through the presentation again. I'm, so I, you know, I missed the presentation and probably what was the public benefit to the, the PUD, but I did read the staff report. I would also probably, I'll go Commissioner Moore. My concern is really more with the, with the master plan. You know, I think the report stated that, you know, where do we draw the line? Could this happen then to the, further to the west? Is this going to happen, you know, further to the south? Or where do we draw the line with, with future dealerships expanding down Jackson Road? And, and the master plan is explicitly stating that they want a, a mixed-use type of development there. So that, that is one of my concerns. And, and maybe I'll, I'll, I'll stop and, and listen if there was more, you know, more public benefit than, you know, some open space and EV charging stations. You know, and I, and I have a little bit of a concern for, for the petitioner, if, you know, when they have, they show a future development. But I think what Mr. Luwan just said, we, we may be waiting 10, 20 years for a future development at this site, maybe possibly longer, or, you know, maybe retail could be an afterthought, that that may be something that the dealership expands into in the future, although it wouldn't be allowed. But that could be something that, that would be the direction they want to head in. So those are my thoughts. Initially, I'll, I'll hang up and listen and then maybe have more after I hear more comments, but thank you.
Commissioner Holland.
Thank you. So I have a question for Doug about outlets. Doug, did Meyer have outlets? Yes, but they weren't a PUD, correct?
Yeah, they, 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 they developed, they took splits later. Myers was just one big chunk of property.
They were early. So Leo's, I mean, those were, that was part of the zoning. That was a mixed use, correct, Leo's? And whatever else is going in there, yeah?
Yeah, all of that property was zoned C2 at one time.
So am I mistaken that the quality 16 was Carlisle and the moved building, Sun and Snow, et cetera? Were those outlets? The building in the front of the quality 16? I thought those were outlets.
Those were outlets, yes.
See, those were outlets and they developed quite nicely, actually, folks. Culvers was an outlet, as I recall, wasn't it? To Loews?
It's an, it's a lot, although I don't think, Loews isn't a PUD.
Well, the idea, you know, the idea, I guess, in that case was, as I recall, and that was before me, was that to get the big boxes set back. The idea, as I recall, was to, to put smaller buildings out front, similar to the outlets at Menards. And those are outlets, correct, Doug?
They will be, that, some of them are split up.
Okay.
That's the idea.
That was part of the whole concept, as I recall, when that came through. So I guess what I'm saying is that part of, part of this is market-driven. Is that before I was, and it might be three master plans ago, before I was, before I was in the Planning Commission, Doug, tell me if I'm wrong, there was a Home Depot that was cited for that, this property, correct?
Yes.
And as I recall, the residents encouraged the purchasers to purchase and move them out, which is what has been suggested by this petitioner. And in looking at the depth of the site and the location of the site to the expressway, the location of the site to Jackson Road, it's topographically challenged. the location of the site to Jackson Road, it's topographically challenged site, I think. I think they've done a wonderful job in working with that. Of course, it's a large site, and they have that to work with. And I remember talking with our previous township manager and township supervisor about what, whether or not this should be, we should move auto dealerships further to the west. And I guess what kept coming to my mind is where else would we want to put them? And I see a benefit to having dealerships clustered from a shopping standpoint of people when they go to shop for vehicles, if they're all in the same general vicinity, they kind of just move around in small areas, opposed to driving to Ypsilanti, to Chelsea, to wherever they might need to go, Dexter, and so on, to look at different models and so on of cars. So I see a benefit to this property being a dealership. And then in my mind, because I've had a long time to think about this, actually, it's been years, because Jack and I talked about it when he was supervisor, is what else? What else would be suitable to be there? Residents have said they want to, that they kind of wanted to move on from that location because of the highway, I think. Would a strip mall be a better use there? And because of the depth and so on, maybe, or a big box? You know, it would probably be a good site for a big box, like we had a Home Depot that had petitioned to be there. So in my mind, you know, I circle all the way around and back that maybe our master plan, you know, I like the mixed use concept, but that's a wonderful way for us to get a look at it. And they came in as a PUD, and we have a little more input to go with that. So I have some questions for the petitioner. And I'm wondering, you know, when I look at SP 1.1, 1.1, with the proposed retail, future retail, and the entire site, I don't see retaining walls. Are there retaining walls anywhere in this proposed site?
There'll be some retaining walls at the detailed grading of that, but it's more like in between the sites. The sites are going to have to step down as you go from east to west.
Intuitively, I saw that when you have like an 11-foot change from the Mercedes to Jaguar dealership and another seven or eight feet down to the BMW dealership.
Yeah. The goal is to minimize retaining walls.
I know this guy's African, but there's a lot of transition going on there. So it's a challenging site to work with, and I like the fact that they've, you know, what they've done with pavement. I think the traffic standpoint, I guess it's good. Well, petitioner, were any of your suburban dealerships in Syo Town should be vacated?
Yes. So there's the existing Mercedes and BMW site that's in the auto mall.
Okay.
Those will be relocated to this site.
And that's all?
That's all, yes.
And my understanding is those people over there, they're looking for more parking spaces and more space, but I mean, that's.
And those properties are currently leased as well. We don't own those properties.
Okay. And I'm just curious, you said you took out a number of parking spaces. Was that to give more open space?
Yes, that was to meet the open space requirements.
Because that's been the one thing, you know, I look at what's there now, and it was parking spaces, because all the dealerships in Syo Township need more parking spaces. And I have great appreciation for the fact that you've done all the double stack parking in the back, you know, you've done the perimeters, you know, there's very little up front. And I think, you know, from your renderings and stuff, it's, it looks far better than the Home Depot out there, guys, I have to say. And it's, I like the EV charging stations, the concept, more bigger, but you know, it's how much power can you get, you know, without having another substation next to you, which may be a good idea.
A lot of big unknowns.
That's true. And I assume, you know, I mean, people should have to pay the charge. I like the idea that you may have a complimentary charge, but I believe the industry is market-driven, and if a restaurant wants to have people come and spend some time there, you know, they'll have charging stations, and I think the market will drive that. I don't think it's going to be the problem that people tend to propose it to be. And I know you said you have smaller buildings, and I'm just curious, will the smaller buildings accommodate your needs?
Yes.
Okay. Because everybody's working with less, right? And then the last thing I have is, and Jan will help me with this, is the J-Rod, the overhangs versus screening, you know, the first is screening. But with the distance they're set back, with the over, it looks like you have some nice cantilevered overhangs, that's something that needs some work, I think. So, but I like the renderings. I think that's my comments. I guess I'll just say it one more time, is like, what else would be inappropriate? It's been, what, 12 years, maybe 15 years since Home Depot came through? You know, what would be an appropriate use for that? And I don't see a pile of takers coming up and saying, gee, you know, I want to get into mixed use, and you guys have been at this for five years or so, right?
Correct.
You know, so I'm sure you've been trying to reel them in, so that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other commissioners that want to comment? Okay, Commissioner Sharma.
I have a quick question. You mentioned that you're presently leasing the current premises where you have dealerships? Is that right?
You'll be leasing the premises where you have dealerships?
Correct.
Correct.
You're leasing it, right?
We're leasing it.
We are leasing it, yes.
So if you vacate, that might become, I mean, you don't know what's going to happen to it, right?
Correct, yeah.
Correct, we're not the property owners.
Not the property owners, okay. That brings up a good, sorry?
I said we can speculate, because one of the things that, you know, as we look at that auto mall, you know, that was developed 28 years ago, and the auto industry was completely different at that point in time. Basically, 28 years ago, you know, those dealerships were designed to service, maybe selling 50 cars a month and 400 vehicles going through the service station. Today, those dealerships over there are selling anywhere from 70 to 100 vehicles per week, or per month, sorry, and servicing over 70 or 700 vehicles. So our speculation is that the struggles that we are having there now are going to still exist, and what you're going to see at that auto mall property is a consolidation of properties, that the existing dealerships who need to expand at this point in time, they expand into those other areas. And a typical dealership now, a five-acre dealership is pretty standard. A lot of those sites out there are only three, three and a half acres in size. So, you know, can we guarantee that's what's happening? No, but that's the speculation, is that once this, we vacate that, move to where the development can breathe and do what it needs to do to be able to function into the future and to deal with electrification. Similarly, the dealerships that remain will have to also adjust and make some changes. So that's likely to occur. Is it likely to occur that another dealership's going to move in there to occupy a specific building? You know, it's hard to say, but it's doubtful. There's got to be some level of consolidation that's going to happen over there. Which is a good thing. It's going to keep the businesses in town, and it's just basically going to right-size it. Every site over there is too small for today's demands on dealerships. And think of how much your region has grown from a population standpoint, and that's really what this is supporting, is that growth.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and comments. And, you know, I've been thinking quite a bit about, you know, the expansion of the auto dealerships to the west. And one of the things that I was struck by with this proposal is, I think you have shown that there is a possible retail mixed use to the west. And I am more comfortable than when it was a park, of this being a mixed-use site. And I think as long as the, you know, a reasonable footprint and the calculations are set forth with the open space and the stormwater and all of that, is that infrastructure is in place so that the site could be developed and that there's an agreement that that land would be maintained in a reasonable condition until that development took place. Because as green space and maintain green space, that's fine. But I have a little bit more of an issue around the community benefit piece. Okay, so it's primarily EV charging is the community benefit. Right now, you talked about the DC fast charging stations. DTE has a rebate of $55,000, and you can put two on in any commercial space. So my real point is, if you can get that kind of rebate for those charging stations, what is the community benefit? So, and could we get four? So DTE is paying for a couple, you're paying for a couple. And then it becomes truly a community benefit, because people will seek out, you know, charging stations where they can charge for 30 minutes, because they exist. And so I'm really interested in pushing that a little bit further. And then the other piece is, I think this project is almost there to where it could be truly a demonstration project for this community of a zero-carbon development. But it's got to go further. And that would be with the buildings. You're talking about electrification, but what is your source of that electricity? Are the buildings all electric? Do we have solar? And I really see a community demonstration project that could be powerful here, because it's talking about transforming the way we build, the way we deal with green infrastructure, and all of those things. So I think it has the potential to be that, but it's not here yet.
So would it be appropriate for us to respond to some of these comments?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. So first of all, please accept our apologies for not providing you with the narrative. I made the assumption incorrectly that everybody was going to be here tonight. I had handouts on what that was going to be. I'll provide them to Mr. Howland and Mr. Lawan. In general terms, the narrative is not substantially different than what was provided before. We had a park before, we have a park now. The park is the community benefit. The park was the community benefit. So from that perspective, the narrative, although it's more robust as far as, you know, obviously, we're going to retain ownership of that park, and it is providing a need to the community. So from that perspective, we, again, we apologize, and we'll get that taken care of. I haven't figured out the mystery of the missing traffic impact study yet. I know we've submitted it a couple of times, but apparently it hasn't made its way into your hands. I do have hard copies of that, seeing that pop up in the report. In general terms, everything that Mr. Lawan had said is accurate, that the amount of impact that a dealership has within this region is fairly minimal. To cut to the end of the story, basically, the traffic impact study is recommending right turn lanes coming into the development on both approaches off of Jackson Road. So I don't think there was any mystery there, but that's basically what the traffic impact study had said. We will provide you with hard copies of that as well. As it relates to the western property, appreciate Mr. Howland's comments with respect to, you know, what that could become in the future. And, you know, obviously, you guys still have control over that. That would have to come back in for a PUD amendment at some future point, and whatever ends up being built there. So I think we would hope that as a part of the drafting of the PUD document itself, that we can provide enough language to frame what it is that everybody's kind of comfortable going in on that spot, and then, as Mr. Howland pointed out, allow the market to drive what does eventually go there. I think that that's a very appropriate way to handle that. And I think we've identified many instances, and this does happen fairly regularly, development of outlets trail other development of property. And we really want to focus on that as being an outlet to our overall plan. I think that as it relates to the master plan, and I certainly appreciate everything that's been said, and that I know a couple of commissioners have come on to say they don't believe that it meets the master plan. But I just go back to that, you know, the statements in the master plan that call out appropriate uses, more intense commercial operations, that's what we are. However, we're not the traditional dealership. It's not the Ford and Chevy-type dealerships that were servicing many, many, many vehicles. It's not, let's put 1,000 cars on the lot. You come and pick, you know, we have your color, we have all the amenities that you want, we have everything that you need, and all you got to do is come in and pick the one that you want off the lot. That's not how these particular dealerships operate. These are more boutique-y type dealerships, which I think really fits in well with that mixed-use piece of it. So I think, you know, as it relates to sewer usage and everything else, I think everybody seemingly is comfortable that the type of development that we have is one of the least impactful that could be on utility services. I think the biggest one to address really is that residential component. And again, we've struggled with that. We actually had a meeting, a pre-application meeting, before we submitted this to you folks for review. That pre-application meeting was with Mr. Lawan and Supervisor Hathaway. Supervisor Hathaway was on the Planning Commission originally, and his comments were very heartfelt, because he sat on the Planning Commission when the residents out there came in and just said, this is no place to live. We need to be bought out. You need to allow these projects to move forward, because this is inhabitable for people within that region. So I hope we can, you know, so based on that commentary, we immediately abandoned anything, any discussion at all with respect to residential. We just don't believe, maybe it's just one person at the township board level, but I'm not sure that there's any support at the township board level for residential, just because you have history on the Planning Commission from when that residential component was discussed in great detail. So, you know, I don't know how that would go down, but what we do know is, you know, being framed between I-94 and Jackson Road, two main thoroughfares, it's a really, really harsh environment to be living on. I think everybody was in agreement at that meeting that residential is needed within the corridor, and it belongs on the north side of Jackson Road. And that was the takeaway from the pre-application meeting and a lot of the dialogue that we've had. that we've had. So with that, I, I hope I have tried to address as many of those concerns as possible. We would sincerely want to be moving forward. I, I think there's a, a whole nother chapter of this that needs to be said at the township board level to, to kind of receive comments and hear what those folks have to say. We have to be back before you folks again for final site plan approval. So, you know, we are, we're really hopeful tonight to be able to be moved forward. And, and let's, let's hear what the township board has to say so that we can take all of those comments and come back to you with a better plan than we presented you today.
Thank you, Mr. Hura. Commissioner Moore.
Thank you. I guess maybe I'm wrong about this, but I thought the intent or the tenor of the master plan was that we create more opportunity for residential development, in particular apartment residential development. Are we saying that that property is not fit for residential development? And maybe I misunderstood that, or again, the master plan. So that was one thing that we had discussed this at a couple of different planning commission meetings in which we discussed mixed use. And we talked about mixed use, excuse me, mixed use in the, in the scope of mixed use residential, similar to what we've been talking about and the Woodview project up the road a bit. So that's some of what, what my, what my concern is about in terms of the master plan. And the other piece is, I think Commissioner Chang kind of brought this up. Where will there be parcels to be able to do mixed commercial residential use along the, the Jackson Road corridor? Now, I realize residential brings about more water use, but my understanding, I thought we were here last time and it may have been that April meeting when we were here with the, with the, a lot about, talking a lot about how to incorporate more mixed use with residential, not mixed use with, with commercial, commercial. And I, maybe I'm confused about what that, what that definition of mixed use is. That's some of the concern I had of it. Where, where do we start to begin kind of projects that what I thought was mixed residential and commercial, in keeping with our goal of creating more, more pedestrian environment along the Jackson Road corridor? So that's, I just kind of wanted to make some comments about that because that was where, I mean, I'm not against suburban project because it's a suburban project. That's, you know, I hope that I'm not, I'm not spending that much on people. I don't know about a Home Depot in conversations that you've had, Commissioner Holland, with prior supervisors or other people with prior supervisors. I'm just looking at, what is the future beyond this project or any other project? What is the future of Scioto Township? What do we want? Now, I get it, residents, they had houses on there, they wanted them, they wanted to be able to sell their homes, but that's not the question here today. The question here today is, what is our master plan vision? What do we want in our community? And I heard last time, a lot of conversation about pedestrian and residential and mixed use commercial. Now, maybe I misunderstood people and I'm, I'm happy to be pointed out to be wrong if that's the case, but that's kind of where, where, where my comments generate from.
Commissioner Holland.
Having been on DDA for a couple of decades, Marnie Mayo, when she was on planning commission a couple of decades ago, she, she was on DDA as well and always came in and wondered about, where's the downtown? Where's the downtown? And, you know, the walkability and, and I am probably one of the few people who actually walked the Jackson, Jackson Boulevard and biked or walked the North Z Road. And I really don't want to do either one of those. You know, it's, it's, when you talk about DDA and Downtown Development Authority, that's a, that's basically a, a form of, of taxing incremental revenues offered to us by the state. It's not like we're trying to create a downtown. However, we did create a, a, a more urban, a commercial area so that the balance of our township could remain, could remain rural. And the, you know, the residential component, I think residential along Jackson Boulevard would be, be nice, but when you think about where, you know, when you talk about zoning and, you know, for years as a developer, I was talking about spot zoning. No, you can't do that, spot zoning. Where is the nearest residential to this property? And it's up like in Myrtle, which just is a falloff from, from, you know, 40 years ago, 50 years ago. And other than that, the residential's all the way, you know, there, there's some that's backed in Parkland Plaza, but other than that, you know, it's along Park Road, along Wagner Road and in the city of Ann Arbor. So from Wagner Road to the west, that cleared that out. And who knows when, like those other properties, like at Myrtle and so on and there, may be vacated to do the same type of a thing because the people are, although they don't have the expressway behind them. So, and the idea that that expressway is back there and you've got, you've got ITC power lines to the west, you've got Jackson Boulevard, residential, I think, Commissioner Moore, I think there's wonderful places for residential in Scioto Township, but I don't think this is it. And when they talk about mixed use, I don't think mixed use is always referring to residential. I was really, very surprised that we had the mixed use come in out at, out by Baker Road with the Woodview. But I think that that's the place, you know, it's market driven. I think that's a place where people may want to live. But I don't see that, that this is a good site for residential. I've had commissioners, trustees in the past say, you know, big box at that location, golly gee, you know, since, since it's gone away once, probably not. And I, I just don't know what else it could be used for. You know, we've got a movie theater building that's going to be turned into something. And that's a big, that's a big parcel. So I, I disagree that, you know, I, I, I understand the confusion because, because it is confusing when you talk about mixed use. And I don't think it always has to be include residential. And I really was not that favorable about this project when it first came in, but the more I think about it and what the alternatives on that site may be, I have a lot more support in that direction.
I would just say one little, one little small thing, Chairwoman Culberson, I just wanted to say, there are residential apartment complexes along the freeway, for instance, on Oak Valley. I mean, they went and turned that whole open space along I-94 into residential. So I just, I just wanted to point that out.
But Oak Valley doesn't have a, a really busy intersection on the flip side, does it? So it's not sandwiched, is, is, that's kind of my point, is that this property is sandwiched.
Commissioner Sharma.
So, yeah, I, I agree with both what Commissioner Moore said and what Commissioner Holland said. So yeah, this parcel land is surrounded, unlike Oak Valley, by dealerships, so perhaps is not exactly most optimum when it comes to residential development. However, it does offer the potential of a development around commercial spaces, whether it be retail, whether it be restaurants, the other kinds of forms of entertainment. So there's no reason for us to believe that that's not possible and that is not a good option. And who knows, even residential might be, but again, at the, at the, at the present time, I would probably not agree. But again, that's something, that's a discussion for a different time altogether. So, so to say that there's no alternative except for a dealership in a place inhabited by dealerships perhaps is not necessarily entirely correct statement, or at least in my opinion, not necessarily optimum. Therefore, I, I do believe that those possibilities ought to be explored because they essentially would serve the residents of this township well. We have seen the development, some restaurants across the street, like, what's the place? The room, session room, for example. I mean, it has attracted a lot of people. And I know it taught this stretch of land would attract a restaurant and with such a large traffic in such a short amount of time. That's just one little example of what happened there. Over the last, in a rather, in a rather undeveloped building, in my opinion, the session room was never really a very impressive, very state of the art building, yet people have started crowding in that stretch of land. So something to think about as we go forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Chang.
You have a, a question for the developer. Is the landlord not willing to renegotiate the existing dealership leased with you?
The existing dealership is too small, Commissioner Chang.
And so if we were to compare floor area, what's the existing floor area of, what is it, a Mercedes BMW dealership there now?
There are two separate facilities, yes. Shane, do you have?
There's 22 and 26.
22,000 and 26,000 respectively versus our new ones, which are?
34 and 44.
34 and 44, which better suit our business needs and what we, what we need to continue to serve our clients.
Okay, so that's, it's approximately twice the size of what's existing then. And so we, we don't know what that, the landlord's going to do with that dealership then at this time. It may sit?
Correct.
Empty for a while. Okay. I, I would just echo, you know, that, I, I think, you know, intense residential here would be fine. I think as Commissioner Moore said, there's plenty of apartments we could drive around that are on I-94. And, and, you know, Jackson is a, you know, it's a, it's a transit corridor. This is where ATA goes. This is where you should have high density to bring, hopefully, you know, don't take offense that the people curb their cars, you know, that they are taking public transportation, you know, whether it's to Myers or to downtown. So I'll just leave it at that. I'm not going to get into a big statement, but I just wanted a little more background information.
So I am not, I'm really hearing a, a very divided commission around one, if this conforms to the master plan. And I'm also hearing, I'm not hearing much about meeting the public benefit piece because obviously the conformance with the master plan is probably key. So I think we're at a point, either we vote or, and, or if we need them to come back, it would be a tabling. Commissioner Hyde.
Along the line of tabling, it was my understanding from the two reports we received from our consultants, that there were several items that need to be part of the presentation in order to give it a full preliminary approval, even if we all agreed with everything that was presented, which it sounds like there's at least some disagreement, but there are missing items that need to be addressed. Or, I mean, that's still on the table, is it not? So.
Indeed it is.
So if I could sum up what, how I feel, we, we number one have items that need to be addressed and there, a lot of them are laid out in the, in the reports. And there are drawings that do not depict dimensionally all the items that are needed. I, I have a concern that we show tree lines in the, along the freeway that are right up against the protected area fencing. I can't tell what the dimension is except for they're pretty close to the trees and then the parking lot is pretty close right after that. I need those dimensions. I mean, there, that's just one item. There's more. So I'm really, and, and they, they're missing the narrative. They say they have it in writing, so it shouldn't take too long to get this all put together. That's my two cents.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm asking is that, is there enough commission support that in, in concept as far as the master plan, that it's worthy to continue the process? And I think, yeah.
Mr. Luon.
Yeah, I would just, with regard to the master plan, I'll just, I'll just say one thing. I, I think there, there is some room for the applicant to provide a little more, I guess their, their, their point of view to a greater degree. And I say that because this, this part of the township, when it comes to the master plan, is probably a little more nuanced than other parts of the township. And what I mean by that is, you know, this property isn't in the southern part of the township, in an area that's planned and zoned for agricultural use, you know, because of significant wetlands, woodlands and steep slopes. And any, any other discussion would be out of the question. I mean, this is a, this is a use that is on Jackson Road, that's in an area that is technically master planned for commercial use. While the new master plan is promoting the idea of residential use, the underlying master plan designation is commercial and all the properties around it are commercial. So this is a little more nuanced of a discussion of the master plan, you know, I believe, than just a yes or no. And so I think the applicant might be able to provide a little more information to support their argument in this case.
Thank you. Then is there agreements? I, I would entertain a motion for tabling then.
I would move.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Hyde and support from Commissioner Sharma to, and I think there, if someone could use the motion language, I think it would be good. Commissioner Hyde, do you have that available? So we can?
Looking at it, I hadn't, I hadn't seen that it was a motion to table as part of this, but.
It's at the bottom, Commissioner Hyde.
Pardon me?
It should be at the bottom of the page.
Okay. I would move to table the preliminary PUD proposal, OA number 21006, PUD PSP number 21013, suburban collection, Lithia rezoning to allow the applicant time to address the items as listed by OHM and Carlisle-Wortman and the comments that have been made by the commissioners tonight.
And Commissioner Sharma, do you still second that motion? Yes, all right. Okay. So it's been moved by Commissioner Hyde and supported by Commissioner Sharma. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Corto.
Thank you. So it sounds to me like a, a conversation that we commissioners need to have is thinking about where residential fits into our concept of, of the Jackson Road. And, and we did talk a lot about that. And, and we did talk a lot about that with the master plan revision. And, and I, and I think we maybe still have some more decisions to do. And I, although I absolutely agree, this is great, a great location in general for residential. If it were on the south side of Jackson Road, I would without hesitation say, yes, let's, let's include residential. But honestly, even though I know there are residential up against, right up against interstates and between a busy road, I wouldn't want to live there and I really wouldn't wish it on others. I think there's a lot of evidence of the destructive aspect of noise and traffic fumes, especially on little kids, if you're going to have little kids out there playing. So I would be really concerned about residential in this particular spot. And I'm, I'm hoping that we as a commission can continue to discuss where we really do see residential as being appropriate. In general, along Jackson Road, absolutely on the south side. But right here up against the freeway, I would have serious concerns about really pushing hard for residential here. So hope we can continue the conversation.
Other comments on the motion? Commissioner Hyde.
Thank you. I know I didn't put it in specifically into my, my motion, but I was saying other, you know, the comments that were made by the commissioners. I'd like to point out one particular one, and that was made by more than one commissioner. And that is, I think that the public benefit that exists is almost solely the EV charging and the pocket park that they're, I believe it's the pocket park that they're saying the park is still in there. And that would have to really draw in the public for me to think that was a public benefit. So I'd like to see them address that in their resubmission so that it does focus us on what the public benefit is. They should address whatever they think the public benefit is.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right, seeing no further comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Secretary Chang.
Okay. Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Sorry, no.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay. Approved, well tabled.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, and we look forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have no new business. And so we'll move along to reports for commissioner, commission and commission activity. OHM, do you have a report for us this evening?
The third phase of the Z Road pathway is all but done. It will, that contract will stay open till the spring as we're waiting for grass to grow. And this is not the time of year for grass to grow. So we will be waiting for that in the spring, but otherwise it is wrapped up and complete.
Thank you. Mr. Luhan.
Looking to, I've been working on the master plan, looking to get the final changes done and hopefully after you guys leave this week.
Thank you. And I did email out, out to folks. There are two additional Scioto citizens who have volunteered to, and indicated as an interest in participating in the Environmental Sustainability Task Force. And that is Martha Mayo and Suzanne Flowers. I forwarded you their kind of bio and kind of statement of interest. And I would like to entertain a motion to appoint them to the Environmental Sustainability Task Force.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Corto, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Chang. Oh, Mr. Hyde, yes, Commissioner Hyde.
I'm sorry, I would just say, you may have already done it, Chairwoman Culberson. Did this email get put into the official packet so the public could pull it up at a future date? I don't know whether you have.
I will attach it to the minutes.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Chang, if you could email that in with the official minutes, my email correspondence, that'd be great. Because I just got all the data today, so thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Holland.
Jay just told me he's not feeling well. And he passed me a note saying that the DDA has not met since the last planning commission meeting.
Okay.
I hope he feels better.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes, I don't have any update on the roads commission. We are scheduled to meet.
We're just voting on appointing Martha Mayo and Suzanne Flowers to the ES Task Force.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you, and they've already been, Suzanne especially has been active already, so thank you very much. All right, other than that, that was my only report. BOT.
The BOT is, continues to interview candidates for township administrator. And I apologize, I don't have my notes before me about whether we've taken action on other planning commission activities. I think we have a couple of matters coming up. So as usual, BOT meets second and fourth Tuesdays. We have a meeting tomorrow at seven.
Right, ZBA has not met, and Jay said DDA has not met, Road Advisory Commission that is not?
It has not met, but we are scheduled to meet this month. I don't have the date, I'm struggling to find the date. But yeah, we have finally a date and we're going to meet. So maybe I'll update you.
LPC.
Nothing major new to report other than that the LPC, together with Parks, will be doing another Saturday's at Scioto Preserves hike on Saturday, November 6th at 10 o'clock at the Divine Preserve. There will be details on the township website.
ZOA has not met. Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, thank you, Commissioner Corto, for that update that included the parks, the walks. We're also, the Parks Group is working on getting our summer intern Anna Corr Cone hired in as a replacement for our old preserve caretaker, so that's on your way. And something that we all would appreciate is that the barn timbers that were going to be used for posts and beams on our pavilions, and the first one will be used on Marshall Park, they've been removed, they've been recovered, I'm sorry, from the old barn. And this is a great use, reuse of material that we're going to be able to showcase at our parks.
Great. Commissioner Corto.
I have a quick question about that, Commissioner Hyde. I know as we are unfortunately having to remove a few trees along the Z Road pathway, as Ms. Boss can testify to, I wonder if we could recover some of those wood from the larger diameter of those trees to use in park pavilions? I just wanted to ask that question and see who at Parks we could maybe talk to about to try to connect people. Ms. Boss, is that, do you all, can you, when you get those trees removed, is it possible to, to get a, send them off to a miller? Does that, I, I just wanted to connect the dots, it doesn't have to be in this meeting.
That would be tap, right? That's not a Parks undertaking.
It would be tap and that it's along the pathway, but Parks, if you wanted, if you needed materials for pavilions.
I know that there are recovery, there's, there's sales of urban lumber. I think they're actually called urban timber or urban lumber. There's a company that does recycling of, or reuse of timbers that are removed. So we could pursue that, and we could see who could, who we could contact.
Jackie, I know in the past, we have coordinated with tree removals to leave the logs where they are, but somebody else would have to come and get them. Usually, I mean, that would be something we could absolutely talk about in contracts, but it's not something we've done in the past. But let's talk offline, we can definitely talk more about that.
Let's just connect the dots, thanks so much.
All right. Um, tap.
Our meeting was canceled last month. I think we had some technical difficulties, but we do meet on the second Wednesday of each month. So it'll be upcoming, hopefully in November.
Okay. Here, Mr. Waterset Council.
I have no update, they'll be meeting next month.
Okay, thank you. And then, great, thank you very much. We have three minutes, so we'll take the minutes of 9:27, 21 first. We have, of the, I'm going to do the special joint since that was first in, and then the, the regular meeting. Actually, I think we can do both of those at once. So there are two sets of minutes, the special joint on 9:27, and then the regular planning commission meeting of 9:27. Are there any additions or revisions to those minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve both the, the special joint session minutes and the regular planning commission minutes of 9:27, 21. Moved by Commissioner Hyde, support by. We need support by Commissioner Moore. Right, any further discussion? A roll call vote, please, Secretary Chang.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Holland is absent. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
And Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Thank you. And next, the minutes of the 10, 11, 21 meeting, and then we'll have caught up, yes? All right, any additions or revisions to those minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Moved by Commissioner Hyde, support by Commissioner Moore. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Commissioner Chang.
Okay, Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Okay. Um, any other items to come before the commission? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Sharma. No further discussion. Secretary Chang.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Corto.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
And we are adjourned at 9:50.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.